Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. I call the special meeting to order. Row call all present except for Sarah. And I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, thank you Becky. And we have Mr. Sequest here to facilitate expectations and goals.
All right, thank you so much.
It's always nice when you approve the agenda when I'm going on the agenda, so thank you for doing that. Well, as you well know, this is our final formal activity with superintendent search. So appreciate you having me come in. What we're going to do today, and we're forming a new team today. We've got a new teammate coming onto your present team. So we're going to talk about expectations, goals, and how to form that new team. So only going to be as good as how much you talk, so that's good news, so I'll be talking less. So, goals and expectations. First thing I want to do, we're building a new team. Mrs. Nicholson might have shared some of these items, but I bet you this board has never shared with each other. Board, what was your purpose or your reason when you chose to become on this board for the first time? Whether you were appointed, or you decided to walk up to the county clerks and register at that point? And then Mrs. Nicholson, what was your reason to apply for this job? So give a little bit of thought, and I'm hoping one or two board members will be able to share with your colleagues what your purpose or your reason was when you chose to make the move. Do you think you can remember that far back?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. I'll give you a little bit of time to think, and then we'll...
Under my... No, she read it out of beat twice, so I thought it was my turn. But no, the longevity, my father served on the school board for 12 years, I think. And his father was a school board, country school. And so it was kind of a family deal. But then, look, and I had thought about it, and then there was a series of board decisions that were made that I was unhappy with. And complained to board members and didn't get any results, so I said, "Well, off this run."
See where it goes from there?
See where it goes from there.
So it's kind of family-like, and then you thought that maybe your...
There were some issues I was concerned about.
Sure, so something that hit the hot button.
Right.
Really girl viewed become board member, isn't it? Any other board members willing to share with your colleagues?
I was asked to finish the term, and might come again just to help our kids.
Oh, great. So you were appointed, and what you want to do is make this the best school district in the state campus? So now, when you say "our" kids, your children or the...
Everybody.
Oh, wonderful. Great, good, good. All six of you don't have to say a darn thing. Is there a third person that'd be willing to share?
Mine was curriculum. At the time I came on, we were kind of struggling as a district. And I had heard talk that they were going to get rid of band and vocal. And I had a son who was very involved with both.
Sure.
And so that kind of drove my decision to run.
Makes a lot of sense, because what your children were interested in, you were worried they may not have that opportunity here. So two of you kind of got on for a personal value, and there's nothing wrong with that. The most common reason for board members to get on is a personal value. Whatever that issue was, personal with your children, nothing wrong with that. And then typically, the longer you're on your board, kind of think about this. The longer you're on the board, then you start thinking, you start seeing things as a board value. Get on the board for the whole district, not just my third grade son or daughter. It's not wrong for that reason, but you're seeing things as a board value. And then when you start wanting to affirm on that continuum, you start seeing things as a public value. What are we doing that might benefit education in the whole state? People want to come and see what we're doing. I want to go out and see what other people are doing. I'm advocating at the state level, whatever it is, to get things going. So personal, board value, per to a public value. So Mrs. Nicholson, you probably said something about this during your interview, but why Hoysington?
Well, one, it was the community. We researched the community before we even decided to take a look at different ones. And then it was in a rural area, so that was a positive. And the other was just, I liked the way that it was transparent enough that students would, are happy here. They continue to grow here, the leaders. So there were a lot of factors in place. It wasn't just one unique thing, but, and other than being a personal goal of mine. That was a lifetime goal, and that's what I wanted, but, no, just, yes, I really liked the...
Good, good. All right. So now teammates, we know each other a little bit more, but we're going to keep going down the line and trying to figure out some other things. So we won't spend a whole lot of time here, but to be part of a good team, you have to have great relationships. So I want you to think about whatever great team you've ever been. It could be in marriage, we don't think about that. It could be an athletic team, but it doesn't have to be an athletic team. It could be a volunteer group at the church. It could be working with the recreation. It could be a team at work. But think about a team that you've been part of, and throw out some terms that made it a great team. What are some things that made it a great team?
Openness.
Openness, all right?
Trust.
Trust.
Communication.
Communication.
Transparency.
Transparency. Anybody else have any? So I want you to think about the terms that you just said, and here's what typically impacts a relationship. So you think about either that team you were on at one point when it went south really quick, or you had a friendship at some point and it went south. These five items really impact a relationship. So when a team, when something goes south in a team, it's typically one or more of these items you no longer see eye to eye. You either, you don't understand your role. You know, my role on the basketball team was not necessarily score to get put in for the last 30 seconds of half and try to foul their best player. That was my role. If I thought I was supposed to score every point, I probably wouldn't understand my role and not been a happy camper. I may have been a cancer. By the way, I was a lot better player at that time. I was trying to think of something. It makes sense. Goal alignment. If you're not aligned with the same goals, things aren't going to go well. Communication, we heard that. Transparency, openness. Communication, you've got to have effective communication. Personality. So at least during the interview, your personality's meshed, and there's a reason for that. And then lastly, expectations. Do you share the same expectations? So we're going to go through all five of these to spend time on are some short-term goals. What is the goal this board, or the objective that you want Mrs. Nicholson to hit the ground running? Because she hits the ground running on something you don't want, you can already see we've got things going the way they shouldn't be going. And then we're going to share expectations. Board, you're going to tell her tonight what your expectations are of her. That's easy, because you're her collective boss. But I'm going to ask her, what are her expectations of the board? And that's a lot harder to tell your boss. You don't have a choice. I mean, she doesn't have a choice, wouldn't you? She, you give her expectation, she's got to do it. When she suggests the expectations to you, you don't have to do it, but it's something we need to talk about. All right? So let's keep moving down the line. Communication. Really, really important that we have effective communication. And a lot of times out here, board members go, "Well, our new superintendent's just not a very good communicator." And then usually, my first question is, "Well, are you listening also? Or are you going in and visiting with him or her about what the issues are?" Effective communication is two-way street. It's not just one person. It used to be when I would drive away from one of these sessions when I was a new employee with KSP, one of my colleagues might call me and say, "How did it go?" And I called him, and it was great. It was, it went really good. Wow, that was naive. Now I'm thinking, I don't get to say if it was good. I don't get to say if I was an effective communicator. You guys get to make that judgment. So to say I'm a good communicator, that's not my judgment. It's not her judgment. Say she's a good communicator, or the board, it's got to be collective. So I want you to think about, to have an effective governance team, you have to have strong, ongoing communication. So when something breaks down in communication, usually the person then where it broke down simply says, "Well, I told them." Was it ongoing? Was it strong? Was there one message, or was there an ambivalent message there that you didn't get? It's got to be ongoing. One thing we'll find out around here is I'm going to guess at times there's diverse opinions around the table here. I see a lot of people doing this. Yeah, that's good. But you have to respect that. And when you have trust, which I heard as part of one of the words you guys said. If Becky, if you and I are not agreeing, or I hate saying that, we have diverse opinions, I would like to think, because I trust you, that I really want to understand why you're saying that. And in turn, the same thing with that. A 6-1 vote is not the worst thing in the world. Neither is a 5-2. If the minority understand, you know what, I had my say. I trust. The team came up with the decision, and that's where we're going. I had my say. One of the things that Mrs. Nicholson does not understand about Hoysington is there's, and I want to use this term, I wonder if you understand what I mean. There's some sacred cows in Hoysington that she's not aware of. There are some agreed-upon processes that you folks know about in your community, around this board table, that she doesn't know about. So you need to keep her out of trouble. She may even say, "You know what, I think I need to go kick that sacred cow." And you guys might say, "You know what, we're with you on that. We think we need to." But you need to be aware, here's what's going to happen. We're going to back you up on that, because it's time to push that sacred cow over. But you need to be aware, we've tried that before, and here's what's happened. So you need to be aware of that. So let's think about this. I used to ask the question, "What is that?" There we go. And it was iced tea, and it's chocolate milk. Well, it's all coffee, by the way, all right? But Kelly, let's assume we all like coffee.
Do you like coffee?
Okay, so how do you like your coffee?
Black.
Just black? Carrie, do you like coffee? And when you have coffee, how do you like it?
Um, honey and milk.
Okay, a little bit of milk in it? Do you care for coffee?
Okay.
But we're going to fake it like you do. Do you like coffee?
Black.
Just black?
Lot of cream.
Lot of cream, all right. Okay, but we're going to fake it like you do.
Okay, remember?
Just one yummy pick.
You don't have to. But as we, this is all coffee. Everybody likes coffee, but everybody likes it a little bit different. So it's kind of like communication. We all love communication, but we all like it or need it just a little bit different. She doesn't know yet how you folks like your communication. You don't know how she likes her communication. So that's why it can be strong, ongoing, and diverse. So there's some agreed-upon processes. There's these sacred cows about how you do things during your meetings. She has no idea until tonight. When you start your regular meetings, it's going to be the first idea of how you do your meetings. She's been to board meetings, they do it this way, you do it this way. Got to, first thing she's got to learn, you got to learn. How do you communicate between meetings? How do you communicate on a needed basis? How do you communicate with individual board members? How do you communicate regarding complaints, concerns? How do you communicate with administrators and staff? And then, this is in quotes, because we truly believe this is best practice, and I hope this board would think the same. Becky, if you had happened to call Mrs. Nicholson, you have a question. And she's either able to answer or not. Best practice might be that she sends an email to the rest of the staff. She doesn't necessarily have to say it was Becky, but, "Board member just sent me an email, called me, asked this question. This was my response." That way, when one knows, everybody knows. Now, sometimes the board president knows things a little bit first. It's a little different, but eventually, everybody needs to know. Becky wouldn't be this way, but if she was the only one that got the response to your question, she now has the power and the secret. Which, how's that go with making, developing relationships when you keep secrets from each other? So that's really important. Unless the board tells you, "Well, we don't like this," it'd be very important, I think, that everybody gets the response, everybody knows the answer. So here's some agreed-upon processes. We're not going to do a thumbs up or thumbs down, but in this district, so Board, do you know how this works? When Mrs. Nicholson believes it necessary to cancel school due to snow, does she need to call each of you? There's really not a right or wrong answer, but she needs to know. This is one of those agreed-upon processes. Because you think you, how you like it, and then she doesn't know, and you're going, "What the heck, doesn't she know how we do it around here? Let's get this one off the chest right now." Does the board need to know when she has to make that difficult call of canceling school because of weather? How's it done now?
We're not informed, other than there's a one-call system.
You're all on it? So you get a call or a text?
Get a call, but it wouldn't be specifically from...
But you're not before anybody else. And of the six of you, is that okay? Or would you rather have the call? Like I said, there's no right or wrong, unless you're doing it wrong and she's in it wrong because she doesn't know anything about it.
Personally, it's okay with me. It's her decision.
Right, it's her shit.
That's right. That's me.
But there are some things that, not necessarily calling school off, but if you have a heads up, but you feel the question before...
Yeah, if it's, you know, if you're doing it at 5:00 in the morning, you probably don't want to know it anymore. But if it's being done 5:00 PM for the next day...
So are we talking specifically to school cancellation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There'll be some other questions.
Okay, that's what I figured you asked.
Yeah, I think this board has evolved. Emails might get checked occasionally, but text messages, or if that's the instant response, it's text messages.
So does that one call go through text, or is it an email, or a phone call, or is there choices?
It's texting and phone call. I get a both. I get a phone call, and then you also get it through a text, if you're set up for both.
Typically, in the past, it was sent out through a text.
And that's just district-wide. That's everyone who's set up for it. Everyone who's subscribed. Don't you have, like, I think when you enroll in school, you pick if you want...
Well, I just want to know what the final answer is, you decide.
At least on the snow days.
On the snow days, that we don't know prior to the debut.
They, and that's the, that's a great, there is no wrong answer, but you guys don't want anything to do with that. I don't know why, is all of the important decisions that get made, boy, keep people getting more upset about that one.
I think they did a good job letting everybody know and notice that I don't want, I honestly don't want to be notified any earlier.
Right. Consigliers, you say, "I don't have any information yet here." We're all waiting to see.
Well, she knows how many hours they need. She knows what she can do.
We don't know any of that stuff.
We don't, I don't keep up with it.
So she, when a decision need to be made for food service, so they're not starting breakfast in the morning before, you know, if you don't call up school at 5:00, they're showing up at 5:30. Okay, here we go. If authorities or law enforcement are called to a school, should the superintendent contact board members? Once again, no right or wrong here.
We have been in the past.
Okay.
We've gotten, we've gotten an email generally, or a text, or a text saying, "Read your email." Which is generally what it is, is a text saying, "Read your, check your email."
Yeah, if there's a lockdown or law enforcement, you know...
Good. Because those are where you get your questions when you're at the grocery store, I'm sure.
I'd rather know before someone else has asked me. And I'm like, "I don't want to..."
Right, so you don't want to have...
Yeah, I'd rather say, "Well, it's taken care of."
And really, I don't want details, just the fact that there was a lockdown.
Yeah, we don't need the details, I don't think.
And a lot of times, the agreement is, and that, thank you for saying that, is a lot of times on a lockdown, your superintendent's with your principals taking care of details, and they need to be doing that, and they contact you later. "Hey, here's what's going on. I'll contact you later with more information." But that saves you at the grocery store. That's where we're at.
There was a time where we had that, and it was, what was it, maybe 30 or 45 minutes after?
Right.
We got the email saying that this is what happened. This is why it was locked down. I mean, we probably all knew it was happening when it, when it was locked down, but it wasn't, I don't think you need to stop your job and inform us that it's happening. Do your job first, and then inform us after. That would be my call.
And another common procedure, and I don't know if this has ever happened, this superintendent might be heading somewhere and go, "Bonnie, can you just send out an email or text to the board members? I can't get to it. Let them know I'm heading to the school. Looks like there's, we just called a lockdown. I'll get more information later." Has that ever happened?
Oh, not on lockdown, but he has.
Some other types of...
Previously. Once cellphone usage became prevalent with the text, that mainly did that. And then we'd be the ones getting the phone calls.
And you don't know the answer. So that's a good point, is if, if the information is warranted, these folks really need to have it too. Because they're getting the phone calls. Board members a lot of times aren't getting the phone calls, but they are, and they don't. Board members know what's going on, and they don't. They're getting all the phone calls, yeah. All right, so how about this one? Teacher files a formal grievance based upon a negotiated agreement. Should the superintendent let the board members know quickly, or can it happen somewhere down the line? So let's say, this might make your answer a little easier. I'm supposed to get 150 minutes of planning period, and I've only got 140, so I'm filing a grievance with the superintendent against the board, obviously. Dude, does the superintendent need to let you know immediately on that? Or is time in your favor on that?
In the past, it's just went down the road a little bit. Here's what's going on, here's how I've been, how I've been trying to handle it.
Right.
And it wasn't a all-fire drill.
Yeah, we're not talking about a safety issue or anything. So, so Sherri, I don't know if you're aware, a lot of supers do a Friday note, which we, or you guys use the Friday notes. That's a great time.
We had done one already.
Hey, you better go.
But it was Wednesday, about Friday.
Yeah. And that's fine, too.
That's fine. Well, but yeah. If on a update or...
Yeah, you might, you know, "Hey, three days ago, we had this filing. I think we're not there. Being cheated out of 10 minutes. I think we've got the schedule worked out. Hopefully, it's taken care of." You know, you don't need to know all the, well, maybe. You don't need to know all the details. That's your choice.
There you end it, you have to be chain-of-command, it's going to go to her.
Absolutely, you bet, absolutely. But if there's ever any question on whether the board should know it, they should know it. You know what I'm saying? Should I tell the board, should I not? Yes, you probably better tell them. The big question is when you tell them. You know, that's what...
My thing is just to try and get it worked out, and then if it can't get worked out, it's going to go to the board.
Yeah, well, eventually go to the board, because it's your agreement with the teacher. Yeah. All right. Now, this one's really a tough one, and especially in the small communities like Hoysington, I can see why. But let's just say, board members have a question for a building principal. Should you go through the superintendent, or should you go directly to the principal? And there is some back and forth on this one. If you're a parent and you need to go talk to the principal about your child's performance or a teacher, obviously, you go directly there. You have that option. So let's assume it's not about that. It's some sort of...
Not about your kid, but about something else that you've been contacted about?
See, I'm going to catch 22, David.
There is a catch 22.
You know, am I coming to them as a board member, or as a concerned citizen?
Right.
And that's where the last...
Right, you know, so... And those of you that have been on the board understand, even though you're coming to them as a concerned citizen, they still see that neon light that says, "Board member, board member."
I don't know that you can even, once you're a board member, and you're on the board, can you even differentiate that?
You might be a concerned board member.
People can, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. That's, I don't think they can, they don't even...
I have a colleague...
Shouldn't that question be more directed towards the superintendent? Shouldn't she be the one telling us, "I want to be contacted"?
Well, I would like to think that. I have a colleague that was a former superintendent in a 6A district, which is different than your district. But he would tell the board, "Every question to a principal needs to come through me. I'll go talk to them, and then relay it so everybody has the question." Now, I know small-town culture is a little different, but if, Kelly, I'll use you as an example. If, if you're coming to me as the principal, and you think it's a pretty innocent question, but you know what I'm doing? "What the heck's going on here? Is there something I'm not aware of? I wonder if Mrs. Nicholson's aware about this question. What's going on?" You know, that's the only reason you need to sometimes really consider when a board member goes talk. It's unfair to you folks, but everybody sees you as a board member. They do.
I guess that's something we're requesting, that we should, it just, you think, if we're questioning, we should tell her, you know? I think the majority of all of us on the same page, the better.
You bet. So yeah, if you have a, let's just say it's a, you've been getting a phone call about some sort of policy enforcement. Mrs. Nicholson, I've got two phone calls about policy enforcement. Can you find out from Mr. or Mrs. Principal on whether that's written down, or that's just a policy that's been...
Everybody knows it.
Rather than just you.
That's also a catch 22, though. Because then sometimes the principal's going, "Well, this was a simple thing. Why didn't you just come say something to me instead of going..."
Yeah.
I mean, it can work that way.
And that's where the power of the relationship between the admin team, she says, "Hey, our board really feels able to rather go through me, and that's, here's the reason." So, no small town, but yeah, you're exactly right. But the relationships between the admin team are as important as the relationships between this governance team. Trust, 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 so important. Okay, another gray area. Board members should contact the superintendent when they receive a phone call from the constituent. And of course, that's very gray, because what's the phone call? But that's where this conversation is important.
I always think if it's a serious matter, I'll get ahold of them.
Sure.
If it's just, my daughter skipped school, and, you know, then you go talk to the principal, don't talk...
You bet.
You know?
Yes, there you go. Yeah, you get them on the chain-of-command, the lines of communication that you have within your community. But that's a tough one, because your constituent wants you, you're on the board, you've got to fix this for me. Well, I'm really not on the board, so I have no decision-making power. And if one of you's trying to fix it, there's six other people on the board that are upset with you. What, you mean you're trying to fix it? You don't have to be on the board.
And I don't think anyone's going to try to fix it. I think, you know, the path we're built is, you know, and it helped the board members, because it limited a lot of the phone calls, is with the chain-of-command.
Absolutely, you bet.
You know, and we're the absolute last ones, and this phone call shouldn't be to me.
Absolutely. In fact, if I listen too much longer, you're going to color my opinion one way when I, the board may have to make a decision.
So, you know, we shouldn't field that call.
Appreciate that. And you can field it, have empathy, but a lot of times, I'd say it is, Shannon, you're getting that phone call. Somebody's complaining about the coaching decision, you know how that is. You could call the superintendent and go, "Hey, just out of here, just had it. Maybe the coach gets some."
And depending on what it is, whether, you know, it's the coach, you talk to him.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, you took some. You give them the chance to change.
But to answer your question on that, the superintendent needs to know those things are going on out in the community, so she knows how to...
That's why you probably should contact the superintendent, so they're well aware.
And if it's a minor thing, yeah, but if it's, you know...
Well, there's one thing fixes another here sometimes, because when, if there is an incident, like we were talking about before, and we get an update, then when you get that phone call, you can talk them down, don't have to worry about, because you've already given us information and said, "This is what happened." So when they call you, it's been taken care of.
You bet. Here's the information, here's the fact. Thank you for your call.
And Bill, that's happened with me and Bill several times, is he gives us those updates, and then you get a phone call, and you're like, "Hey, I just got a board update, and it's handled."
But it's also a port of communication, doesn't it?
Yeah.
So much. Kind of tied along here, let's say Sherri's not an Instagram person, or Twitter, Facebook, and you guys see some sort of rumor about your school district that's popped up on social media. So should you inform your superintendent of that, of that rumor? Everybody loves social media and social systems, you know?
I just don't, I, I get the question, but I don't understand if anyone ever takes anything on social media seriously. That's my view on any of that, anything, but people do, I know, I know they do.
But we have dismissed teachers because of the things they posted on social media.
I know, it's just, I just, I don't know.
And I'm not a social media person, so I...
It's entertainment, is what I look at it as.
And the most common response would be, and I won't say, you know, when I do a lot of these, is, "Yeah, we know he or she is not on," or even if they are on, they're not the same people. If it's something about the district, you probably at least need to be aware of it.
Yeah.
And it seems like every time that something happens like that, we went to Bill, Bill said, "He'll be well aware of it in a hurry."
Right.
Or the next time you look, it's gone. He's already took care of it.
She's crazy, he's been on there for a long time.
And, and, we keep talking about how Bill thinks, this is your board now, for a good history. But, but over the years, the board developed that trust factor with Bill.
Absolutely.
And they do those things, so. That's my expectation, is to have that trust with you, that something comes up, you're going to take care of it. And we don't have to worry about it.
And then just inform us and say, "Hey, this was done," and...
But we're here, she needs us.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And Dean, what you said is so true of Kansas is that a new team member, you trust even before the turn because you're Kansas folks. You're, until it's broken, you start with that trust.
Yep.
Now, this is difficult. There's a couple of you on the board that know how this is worked, but does everybody on this board know how the monthly agenda is established?
No.
That's a good, that's why we brought this up, because most board members are...
I can tell you right now, no.
Okay, good. So, Sherry, you've got this weird look on your face.
I mean, there's many agendas. Are we talking about the board?
The board agenda is what this we're specifically talking about. So, thank you for being honest, Kelly, because most board members really don't know. So, Jim and I, if you can't get this, this is great. If you wanted to get something on the agenda for next month's board meeting, would you know how to go through the process to do that? Yes. Okay, and what, what, what do you know about here at Hoysington, how you do that?
You don't choose the board president.
Okay, very good. The board president is the gatekeeper to the agenda. Now, I also know this...
But he's also the one that says can or can't.
Absolutely. No, we're not putting that on the agenda.
Why should it be voted on? I mean, I mean, why should it be given a...
Trust, trust. Most board presidents would say, "You know what? Let's get that on the agenda," you know, probably right. Or if you're a new board member, "We talked about the football coach all year. Let me visit with you about, we've got a process in place to take care of that. Get you up to speed on why we don't want to talk about it anymore because we did it for a year and we've got a process and it's in the superintendent's hands." Sometimes there's a reason, you know, you may not like it. So, they're the gatekeeper, but in most districts of this size, it's probably the clerk and the superintendent getting together and putting the agenda together. Maybe the board president comes in the week before and they sit down and review the agenda. So, there are surprises.
Ever since I was board president, the week before, try and sit down, the superintendent...
Review.
Just the president and the board, and the superintendent?
Clerk.
Yeah, and the board.
Name of the year, yeah. Is that the way it is in most districts?
Districts of this size, probably the most common, sometimes the vice president, but it's just really hard to get folks, you know, to have time to do that.
But the key is that there's issues come up to let the president and the superintendent know that you're concerned about it or would like to discuss it with them.
And then Shannon, if you're at tonight's meeting and you'd like to get, put something on the agenda, April, I'm sure you can always bring it up and then it's considered and could be brought up to a vote or by consensus, we'll have that on the agenda. Bonnie's making a note of that, make sure that's in the board's agenda. But for a patron to get something on the agenda should be, and I hate to say this, should be a little more difficult. Not that they don't have that option. But do you have a process, for an example, if I'm a patron in your district, I'd like to put something on the agenda and we'd talk about that, that they have to come in by a certain time and get that put on the agenda at a certain time?
I think I've got a sheet out there.
Yeah, and that's good, Bonnie, because typical, let's say by Wednesday noon, if you want to be on the agenda, you have to fill out these papers, it can be done online by Wednesday of the meeting before. Now, as a superintendent, I'm going to look at that and go, "Okay, that's important, but I'm going to go try to fix that so they don't have to be on the agenda." So, I spend the rest of Wednesday calling Mrs. Smith up and saying, "What's going on here? Talk to me, tell me." "We can fix that, Mrs. Smith, no problem at all." "Really?" "Yeah, are you sure you still want to be on the agenda?" "No, it's going to be fixed." Then on the Friday note, Mrs. Smith came in, wanted to talk about this. She has assured me, we've got it taken care of, she's assured me that it's satisfactory. So, she, that way you still know that Mrs. Smith wanted to be on the agenda. Now, if you can't fix it, she still gets to be on the agenda.
Can't keep them off, they, I mean, is that...
Pardon?
Can't keep them off if they want to be on the agenda, they're on the agenda.
You've got to be real careful about what they talk about in public, as you well know. And we would also say be very cautious on what you, who you allow into executive session. Because everybody that requests to go to executive session, as soon as you say yes to Dean, then the next paper, well, you let them in, now I want, so you've got to be very... So, a lot of times, you set the superintendent on him and talk it out, and then the superintendent shares it with you. Once again, there's got to be trust because that patron will go, "Well, how do I know? You're going to tell them exactly what I want you to hear."
I'm trying to think. Sure, I am deep myself, but all the years I've been on, I don't think we've ever let anybody into executive session.
You didn't, that is the board's privilege.
Only time I've ever remembered is if we had something like Joel's been back there once or twice.
Yeah, yeah.
But something like that, but not anybody other than...
Just general public.
Right, right.
Because you remember, staff members and patrons are not held to the same level of confidentiality as you are by law as board members.
Yeah, I'll qualify that. We've had administrators come in for review.
They give you their report about whatever that incident is.
But never a citizen or a patron.
So, you're...
I don't know, I don't think we ever...
Which means somebody behind the scenes is probably working really hard to keep these people happy so they don't feel like they have to continue to force the way they do. Now, the last question on this is, I'm going to call the core work, which I would like to thank, is student success, student achievement. How do you, as a board, keep yourself informed about the core work of the school district? Sherry wants to know this one, I can see it, I saw you shake your head, yes. How do you keep yourself informed, or how are you informed about the core work of the school district?
The superintendent.
Okay, so are there reports at board meetings, Friday notes? How is that information given to you?
At the board meeting?
Our administrators have the time at any working, they give us a report when they're here.
Okay. And if you have some instructional pieces, who knows, you may have a teacher coming out or Mr., or the principal or the superintendent will tell you about this learning initiative or...
So, right now, it's mostly just through board meetings, okay? Right? I mean, people talking at board meetings.
Talking around from test scores and...
And everybody's happy with that?
Get the information in the evening.
And when we have teachers go to conferences or do things, that we usually have them come give a report on what they did or learned.
We've spent some money on you, some time, we'd like to see what you learned.
That's a good idea.
Okay. Sherry, you think you got your answer on that?
I mean, I would add one or two, I didn't know if I, can I talk at these?
If the board lets you.
Okay.
They would like you to.
So, one of my questions, questions would be on the student achievement part, is that the principals, I noticed, they do come to the meetings, but if that is optional whether or not they come to the meetings unless they have a report to fill out or, you know, to share with, then I guess that's what I would like to know. So, if we're really in a discussion of where we're headed academically, and of course, you know, as you shared during the interviews, that you expect growth, then, okay. If we do that, they also have to know that you, as a team, have that high expectation for them and if they need to hear that discussion while they're here, then we need, I just need to know, are they expected to be here every meeting? Or when we give a board report, I would like to set up that report against our goals that you set. So, let's say goal one, you set it tonight, then I know when they're reporting, you want to know what's happening in goal one, goal two, goal three, from them. Is, would that be a fair assessment? That way you know all the time how what they're doing is in relation to the board goals rather than just fluff out there or something.
And I think they are required to come to the meetings, right? If they're available.
They're supposed to be here.
Most of the fall, they're usually all here, through the fall. Through the spring, when sports get really crazy and everybody's going every direction, that's when we start missing one or two. Usually, they'll send a report to Bill of, you know, what's been going on or something like that.
Yeah, Bill's read us Joel's report before when he was gone, and I remember some stuff.
Or Matt would send something with Joel.
He would tell Joel something, yeah, to give to us.
So, that's kind of how we...
But do they actually require them? That's what I'm asking, I don't know, if they're required or if they're just asked, I don't know.
I think it's just been understood that they can...
They need to and they're available?
Yeah. She, Mrs. Nicholson, sent me an email today, "Do you want them here tonight?" And I said, "Give them the night off." You know, I gave that permission.
And during the summer, I can...
Because, you know, they're not doing anything. Yeah, technically, they're not under contract right now.
Yeah, and they're not, they haven't been in their buildings for, you know, so they don't, probably don't have much of a report to give.
So, that's why I said, "Don't come," you know?
Yeah.
So...
Really, the thing is, is if they have another school...
Another obligation?
Obligation, really.
Yeah, just stay home, they don't get that option. So, whatever you guys say is right.
Because athletic director, AD, AD's hardly ever here because he's always...
Especially in the spring.
Yeah, he's always at a event, a lot of times there's stuff on Mondays.
So, our expectation is that they are here unless there's a school obligation that they are responsible to.
Well, or what about a personal obligation? Because Joel's got small kids and I know he misses for sports sometimes. So, are we talking a personal obligation as well? Or what? I'm asking, I'm just throwing that out there because if we're going to set an expectation, we better have all the questions asked.
I mean, do we expect them to be present or...
I was going to say, even if they're not present, as long as you have a report from them that can be presented to the board, I don't think it matters.
Yeah, I find that too, yeah.
I think as long as they're giving a report to you to...
So, the expectation is that they have a report of some kind with that information to Bill just to update the board?
Right, okay.
So, the report is the expectation and then the attendance is the other.
But I agree, if the administrators are here to hear the discussions and understand the reasoning why we're doing things, that helps their role too.
They are your feet on the ground, so they need to be at the same goals and expectations that you folks have.
Well, they're there to provide the feedback sometimes too, because you will, you know, question them about certain things and get that immediate feedback from them as well, so that's one thing. Having them here helps.
Yeah, there are times that there's a question that comes up, "Well, what the macro and..."
So, and so then, after a board meeting, and I don't know this process, how we've done in the past, but after a meeting, do you, does the superintendent have administration meetings with the administrators after that?
If I can jump in.
Yeah.
This time, I have set up the leadership meetings, board, our building leadership meetings on Tuesdays.
So, after a board meeting, you would go in and...
For this very purpose, that they would be informed of what we talked about if they weren't here or what our expectations are for the next part. So, that way, there isn't the night before then wondering if, you know...
A latch.
How we're going to do this. So, I set that up for Tuesday, hoping that that was a workable day for them.
Right. Then, in, in your interview process, we'd ask you questions about accountability and what you wanted, and what you were going to require from, from your administration, okay? When they give their administrative reports of what's going on in their schools and stuff, it's great to me. You know, I don't know if they're meeting their expectations, you know, if they're not meeting their expectations from the superintendent or not. So, I would like to be able to know where we stand on, because you said you're going to set expectations for each one of your staff members, you know, or your administrator, building administrators. So, you know, we need to know where they're falling at on your side too.
To give an example on that, for student achievement?
Yes.
I will take our data set and we're going to have data consult meetings. And that's something that I was going to talk to our group about, was how we'd like to see that because you cannot make improvements if they don't know what it is you're expecting. So, through the data consults, then what it would do is take, again, our board goal, taking that assessment information of where they're at, the student information, and just laying it out. So, principal A, all right, these areas are, were low in these areas, do you know the why? Do you know which students they are? If not, I want to know. I want you to know. So, those are the expectations and those are non-negotiables. Those are things that will, you know, have to happen, otherwise you don't improve. You have to know the why.
Right.
So, that would, that's how I would know that. And then when I send out my Wednesday update every two weeks, then it'd be like, I had data consults on these days, we're scheduled for this timeframe, and then these are the things we talked about, this is where we're headed, this is what goal they're meeting. You know how it is, we got it up here and now I just got to get it on paper so I can get it up, so it can make sense. And that's, our first meeting is set for August the 5th, August 5th? I can't remember.
That's the board meeting date.
It's, um, okay, it's in August. And to sit down and, you know, talk about this as what they look like and what I expect out of data consult. And you know, to me, you have to do one and then report it and then have you read it and say, "This doesn't make sense. What do I do with the information?" For us to make a change in it so it's workable. Because the worst thing to do is to send you something related to achievement data and it, it's not making any connection to anything. I want you to have it right on the menu. So, but yeah, there will be, and that's how you tell the expectation. If a building principal cannot share with me the whom and the why, then they're not doing due diligence. They have to go back and I would help them. That's when I step in and say, "Okay, let's do this together. I'll help you understand this."
Going back to your, your leadership team meeting on Tuesdays, one of the things that Dawn and I got quite a bit of during negotiations was that a lot of the teachers didn't feel like they knew what was going on after the board meeting. And I think some principals did a pretty good job of relaying that information to other staff members. So, that's, really wasn't negotiated either, but it was a concern that they brought up that we need to let the staff know, especially on resignations and job openings and things, that they didn't feel like they were fully aware of.
One thing...
It's communication.
Sure, absolutely.
And then one thing that will work with this, that the data consults work the way that I envision it to be, is that every staff member's going to be part of those pieces anyway, so they will know how that is connected to the board goal.
Well, we started sending out non-official minutes the next morning, and that has seemed to really knock a lot of the phone calls and texts down. So, if that's the way you still want to do it.
Yes, I mean, I don't want to change what's working, I can't promise it next month.
Well, but...
As soon as possible, right.
But yeah, that, and that's something that we just started doing, so that's not a sacred cow, it has to be that one, that should be.
I think the more informed they are, the better it becomes, especially when they have questions.
The last thing on my communication, if you would read that quote up there, I bet you we all, I'll see some heads nodding. There's nothing worse as a superintendent or as a board member where you're downtown and somebody asks you a question and you absolutely do not have any idea what they're talking about. It's embarrassing. So, that's why it's very important for each other, of you to prop each other up by being great communicators. All right. We're going to spend a little bit of time on role. If you've been on the board at any sort of time, you've seen this. But what's interesting, you're talking about some, some goals, which are so important. Her role with your goals is different than your roles with the goals. You share the same goals, that's the nice thing, but your roles are different. So, I'm going to quickly go through this little thing here, some of you have seen it. We call this the governance clock. So, everything above that perforated line is the board's authority. Everything below that perforated line is the superintendent's authority. And I have driven through Hoysington for 40-some years and I have never seen a red perforated line painted anywhere down through the town, which means I have no idea where that line is, right? Nobody really does, until somebody crosses it and then you just kind of know. You know, you're wondering where the line is, oh, there it was. That, that's uncomfortable. You both will have that feeling. So, I want you to think about, this is perforated, perforated to indicate communication between both parties, the superintendent and her delegation and the board. So, board, you establish the vision. Looking behind here, you've got goals from 13 to 18. That was your vision for the school district. So, when you set that vision, then there had to be some sort of a policy. You probably approved those goals by at some point, so you've adopted the policy for that vision. So, I don't know what your goals are, but let's just say one's back there says they're improved reading scores. So, let's just say that's one of them. So, you've established the vision, you've adopted the policy, and one of those things is improved reading scores. And let's just say, what if that comes up tonight as one of your, the goal that they want to hit you for ground running, all right? So, they've adopted that policy, the next click is going to be down in your work. So, now you develop the plans on how to improve reading. So, board, you just told her what you want to do, improve reading, and now you get to figure out how to do it. See the difference? What versus how. When board members try to do the how, they cross the line. When superintendents get to figure out the what, they've crossed your line. So, even though she's responsible for developing the plan, she's still talking about it. "Hey, I've sent some teachers out to a couple of school districts that have great reading plans. We've been doing some book reading on this. Looks like we're heading this way, board. You're still kind of on the right track, board, see, communication." But eventually, when the plans have been developed, they're yours, and then once you said, "We like those plans," then now, Mrs. Nicholson, it's your... said we like those plans, then now, Mrs. Nicholson, it's your responsibility to get those plans implemented into the classrooms. Once they're implemented, then those plans need to be monitored. So the next two clicks are similar, yet different. So your job is, we just talked about communication, how do you learn about the core work of the school? Right here. She's monitoring the progress of those plans to you folks, so you know your vision, you just kinda said that, you'd like to know. So you know the progress you're making on your vision. Now, the next click is you guys, and it's different than monitor, but similar. You ultimately get to have the privilege of evaluating the results of those plans. Now, Mrs. Nicholson's been around long enough, she's monitoring these plans, started in September, and about March, you come to, you go, we've been talking about this a lot, board, I know you get to evaluate, but I just don't think we're getting the bang for the buck, board. Can I have permission, or our team, to tweak the plans? Rather than, wouldn't that be a lot better than you guys sitting around, I just don't, anybody gonna say anything? This doesn't seem to be working, I've been hearing about this, it doesn't seem to be working. It's a lot better if she brings it up, but you do have the privilege of evaluating that, all right? So board, you always get to decide. The superintendent always recommends, so Mrs. Nicholson, any, now, I'm exaggerating here, but anytime they raise their hand, there should be a recommendation. Now, I'm exaggerating, you know? I think you ought, I recommend you approve the agenda, you know what I'm saying? But buy a bus, those plans, whatever it is, I recommend we go with this particular quote on the bus, it's forty-eight passenger, it's five hundred dollars less, it's got thirty more horsepower, whatever it is, and it's gasoline, just like you want. I recommend that we do that bus. So, I want you to think about, now look at that line, no communication, and look where it's at, it's up in the board's work. So either the board has abdicated their responsibility by allowing the superintendent to do some of your work, and the most common I see is, we're only here once a month, superintendent, tell us what our goals need to be. So you just let her, in this case, set your vision. Now, when you're setting the vision, I'm never saying it's just the board, you got all kinds of people you're listening to, and they're making recommendations, because they are working, but you're the one doing it. And then unfortunately, if a board member or the board is getting into superintendent's work, that's either considered a micromanaging board or a micromanaging board member, and the most common one is, well, I know we want you to improve third grade reading, I think, here's how you need to do it. You see, that's her job. Now, you're talking about it, but that's her job. So board, you get to decide what, Sherry, you get to decide how. The board requests information from you, and you provide them with that information. That has a lot to be, think about going back to that expectation of talking to the principal, you have a question for the principal. You're requesting the information from the superintendent, she may have to go to the principal to get it, but she's providing the information that you wanted. The board deliberates and decides, you provide options and make recommendations, the board adopts policy, you get to implement it. When I say you, obviously you're working with your principals, they're working with site council, teachers. Board, I'm sure you know this, because there's a lot of experience, but board, you contract with the professionals. She just recommends, so for example, in April, when you have tried to hire that English teacher, the principal can't say, congratulations, you're our new English teacher, until that next meeting, when you contract with them, that's when it's official. And then lastly, at some point, whether you knew it or not, this board has approved the evaluation criteria for the teachers and the principals within your school district.
Never have.
Probably happened about seven to eight years ago, maybe?
We've asked for that, never have gotten it.
Okay? So the teacher, the stated about seven years ago, the criteria that the principals and teachers, their evaluation instrument has to include certain criteria. Now, I think it might be McCrell, it might have been changed, because my first year on KSB, I did some McCrell evaluation training, which your team was here there.
We did McCrell, and then we switched.
Right, because it's hard, there's no doubt, yeah. So you approved that criteria, but the superintendent supervises and evaluates the personnel. So now, obviously, she's not gonna be evaluating the kindergarten teacher, but she's making sure the elementary principals are getting that one done. So board, who do you evaluate? One person. Darn it, it's not the football coach, or the basketball coach, which is easy to do.
So would board members really ask to see what the evaluations are? Or we don't get them, I mean, is that normal?
That's, as an individual board member, you cannot see an evaluation, because you're just a patron. But if the board as a whole requests them, then you can see them. Now, it's, I see, I will just tell you how I did it, when I was going in and talking about the two teachers that were under a plan, and say, they're not doing the plan, at that executive session, I might have those two evaluations off to the side, and not ready to show them unless the board goes, which you're like, see their values? Well, I'm smart enough to bring them in, here they are, you know, because you requested it. But it has to be done as a board, not an individual board member. Because as an individual board member, you have no more authority, you know, as a patron coming in.
And even, in that case, even the president and the vice president don't have authority unless the whole board proceeds it.
Correct. That's dicey. I mean, yeah, it's, yeah, the board as a whole can see evaluations. Shannon, if you just came in and say, Bonnie, I wanna see the superintendent's evaluation, she should say no to you. I'm not. But as the board, when you're discussing the superintendent's evaluation, she's been here for three years, you have the right to look at the previous evaluations, if the board chooses to do that. And of course, that would be an executive session. Shannon, any questions, comments on that? The law is very clear on that. Sherry, I did not know this law existed when I was a superintendent, it really shouldn't change your job, but I heard most board members go, you're the superintendent, it's your shit, I heard that. Which basically says the superintendent should not charge and control of the public schools, but subject to the board's policies, procedures, processes, those types of things. So you're the CEO, you're doing the day-to-day operations. So, board, I heard her say, when everyone assessments, they're gonna drill down with the admin team to individual students. Board, you're just worried about the district as a whole and your schools as a whole. You may not, you may know that the third graders are not doing as well in reading as you would like them, because you're getting that report, but you won't know that it's Suzie and Johnny and Abby that are keeping your scores down, that's, you know, their role. So you're above the line, you're doing the district and the school, and your district administrators are worried about the classroom, the individual teachers, yes, at some point you're gonna hear about them at some point, and the individual students are below the line. So think about this, this little slide, I'm hoping will illustrate, find a little straight role, but look at that wedge in that log, when roles are out of alignment, so when the board's trying to do the soup's work, the soup's trying to do the board's work, the principals don't know where to go, because you guys have got it mixed up. So when roles are out of alignment, everyone works harder and feels more frustrated while actually getting less done. So now that illustration, can anybody tell me why I chose that particular illustration for, to go with that quote?
It's showing the separation and the division.
You bet, you bet. So you got, you got a wedge, that you, somebody's driving a wedge between the two parties.
Yeah, it's hard to put back together.
Boy, whoa, that's a good one, I've not heard that. Yeah, so once that log is split, it's hard to put it back together. So you got two things other than one unified district. We gotta root for that one. All right, personality, this is fun as part. So if you look on your little sheet of paper, you'll see a four quadrant, some of you, in fact, I'm requesting that you don't, you do not have to share this, I'm not gonna ask you what yours is, if you wanna hide it so your partner can't see what you're doing, that's fine. But personality around the board table is so important, and I want you to be aware of this in this manner. On those quadrants, so if you look in the upper-left quadrant, you can see the words precise, rule follower, serious, critical. Go through each one of those quadrants, circle every word that you believe internally best describes you. You may have a word circled in every quadrant, you may not. I'm hoping one of the quadrants will have more words circled than another, but if you have a tie, you have a tie, try to break it if you can, no big deal. So go through there, don't put the words that you think everybody believes you to be, this is what you know yourself to be. Bonnie, I'm glad you're doing it. We're not gonna let anybody know. All right, so I'm gonna make an assumption, you're done, and if you're not, please continue. But if you have more words circled in the upper-left quadrant, you may be the analytical type, all right? Now, notice I'm not trying not to look at anybody in their eyes, because I don't want you to, you know, I don't want you to... But think about what the analytical type around the board table, the analytical type might be this person. Gosh, you did give us a lot of information, Mrs. Nicholson, this is a tough decision. What other data do you have that might allow me to make a better decision? This person needs a lot of data. Not, it's more analytical type data, not quantifiable, you know, it's not qualifiable, it's quantifiable. So they need more data, all right? Now, if you happen to be in the upper-right corner, you might be considered the driver. Now, please do not ask my wife what I am, because I will admit I'm a driver. And the worst part of the driver is, why are we even talking about this? Because I already know what we need to be doing, so why do we need to discuss it anymore? And I might try to talk over you, because I'm loud, so think about a driver. Now, there's good parts of a driver. If you're in the bottom-left, you might be the amiable type. The amiable type around the board table is the person that you might hear this. Now, I know you wanna improve third grade reading scores, but, gosh, within that third grade, we have a lot of ESL kids. Are we really, is our plan's gonna include those ESL kids? Is our plan's gonna include those kids of poverty? I mean, you're thinking about individual students, you're worried about individual groups within your community, or your school. And the upper bottom-right, excuse me, the bottom-right, you may be the expressive. You might be the person that drives the driver nuts. Because why are we talking, remember the driver, why are we talking about this? But the expressive needs to hear everybody's opinion about this great decision you're trying to make, and they wanna hear it. Now, here's what an amiable does when two drivers are talking back and forth, you may wanna admit to being a driver here besides me. Okay, Dean, so when you and I are across the table, and I'm clear over there, come on, Dean, don't you think this is what we need to do? No, Gary, this, we're fine, we're used to that. Amulets going, is it break time? Here's a cookie, here's a cookie. Right? Now, think about this, I'm not gonna ask, I don't wanna know, if we had seven analyticals, eight with the board member, eight analyticals around the table, would we get anything done? No. If we had eight drivers, oh, board, help us, no. Eight amables, no. Eight expressives, no. So the question on, and you all know the answer, you know the question, it is very important that we have all kinds of personality types around the board table. And when you have trust, I now understand why Becky needs to talk this to death, she's an expressive. Now I understand why Dawn, this needs more information, because he may be a analytical. So it's very important. And then she's trying to make recommendations, knowing all these different personality types, and trying to provide the information you all need to make an informed decision. Questions, comments? So I want you to think about, the coffee I gave you, hand, everybody, these are camera lenses, everybody knows that. But think about when you've got the different personality types, everybody sees the decision through a different lens. But when you have trust, and you have great conversations back and forth, dialogue before you're making that decision, the goal is to get, so everybody eventually sees it through a common lens. But it takes great trust and communication to get there. Will make any comments, could you please read that? All right, so we're getting to what we're here for. Goal alignment. I know you have some goals, theoretically, it appears that they've reached some sort of a due date, with 2013 to 2018, but our goal here is to provide some sort of goal, not eight of them, hopefully one, maybe two, goals, it doesn't have to be anything that's already established, that we, you as a board, want her to hit the ground running. Because she's over here working on third grade reading, and you really wanted to get the roofs fixed, you're all going, what the heck? We want a third grade reading, well, did you tell her? We're gonna tell her tonight, okay? So I want you to think, Dawn, if you, Dawn, if you could work with these two gentlemen, since we've got three and three here, we're gonna do a little bit of team things here, so I want you to think about this. Within your group of three, and your group of three, try to come up with three changes that your district, that you can agree over here, the three changes that your district either has or will be encountering. So over here, the same thing, what are three changes that you believe your district either will be or has recently encountered? So when you come up with those three, then we're gonna write those down. Appears everybody's gone through three now, so let's just report out before we go to the next, which I know you see it coming. So on changes, let me, would this group give me one change that I'll write up here? What would be one of your three?
Administration changes, lots of changes in administration.
Okay. And then the FAR group, could you give me one, please?
To make our district, Mrs. Nicholson's district.
Oh, okay. Okay, and then the closest group, give me a number two?
Ever change in funding, lots of changes in funding.
You bet. So budget?
Yep.
Okay. Number two on the FAR group?
Have an environment where teachers wanna stay here or come here.
Okay. And then the new, the close group, number three?
We have staffing changes, a lot of young teachers and young staff.
Yeah, I think I heard something like fifteen or something changed. And then you're number three, I know you struggled with it.
I wrote down, change our ability to deal with the demographic changes of our district.
See how common that is? You didn't even have to say it, because I hear it all the time.
I guess she's on that one.
Okay, so the next drill, you gotta know the drill, so the next one is, what's three threats to your district? Three threats. And threats are typically things that are out of your control. Now, you know, trying to make fun here, but it's not funny. Large manufacturing plant leaving Red Wing. Well, if that was the case, and you had a bunch of kids in Red Wing, you might build some, you're losing enrollment, that's a problem, and you have no control.
It's not that it has, it's just that's changed.
Absolutely, some of them, that's why it's important, somebody ended up on the same thing.
What we have, if you look at the enrollment numbers there, it's kinda up in, kinda the population of big classes, the way this class was big, the next class was small. Yeah, it's a whole thing.
I'm gonna start with you folks, you give me your first. All right, so the FAR group, give me one threat.
Funding.
Funding. Excellent. Close group, what's... Close group, what's one you got?
Declining enrollment.
Declining enrollment. Those are connected, aren't they?
Childcare.
Healthcare?
Childcare.
Childcare, okay.
That's a good one.
Very good.
Housing availability.
Housing. Yep.
Drugs.
Drugs.
Decline in the job market.
Decline in the job market, okay. Okay, very good. Now, the last one is, what are some of your challenges that you see? What are some of the challenges? Make a list of three challenges. I heard declining enrollment, challenge can also be increasing. Three of those, if you can come up with them. We have two. Are you okay with that? Okay. So let's start with this group, give me one challenge.
Changing enrollment, up and down, changing enrollment.
Like Ken, good. Oh, uh.
Fluctuating.
Okay, all right, all right.
Fluctuating numbers for enrollment.
Gotcha. Okay, the FAR group?
No student left behind, it's been a challenge for teachers.
Okay.
Teacher retention, retaining teachers.
Oh, we had that one.
We had that five minutes before you guys.
You heard us.
Balancing budget, there, I got all of it.
And their number two over there?
Well, they took it, but, okay. Keeping up with technology.
Okay, great. And what'd you say your last one?
Just balancing the budget is always a challenge.
Very good, okay. Now, I want you to keep this in mind, but within your group, I want you to think of five potential goals, or they could be objectives. But this would be the objective or the goal that you want her to concentrate on. So within your group, come up with five. If you would please write one per sticky note. So FAR group, are you hearing this?
No, they never do.
So if the FAR group over there, if Kelly's group would listen.
Sorry.
Oh, okay. But if you would put one objective goal per sticky note. So theoretically, you don't, I'm not going to read a quote, please, up to five.
You're right.
Could be something you already have on there, you want concentrated on, up here on your present goals, could be. But consider what you've said with the three up here. Come up with five potential goals. Somebody, somebody from this group's going to have to come up and explain to this group. Read them all the other words that you-
Yep, there you go.
You got to stick them up there and get your five more.
Yeah. All right, so somebody from this group will take those up. I put them on the phone, explain to your colleagues what your five.
Did you hear?
No.
You're going off the board, so you can't do this.
All right. All right, Shannon, come on up with your five goals.
What's with the little pink stickers?
So Shannon is going to explain the five goals or objectives, and he's going to put these down the left-hand line. Is this group listening?
Yes, we are.
None of them.
And you're going to listen very closely, and if they have a goal that's exactly like yours, you don't need to put it up. If it's similar, not to put it up, or maybe put it close to the one that you think's together. So please explain to your colleagues what the objectives or the goals that you're looking at.
Maintaining and adhering to her budget.
Ding ding ding.
You like it once you know that's less talking for you, right?
Better communication with the board and staff. She needs to establish trust amongst her administrators and staff. We want to hear more about student achievement and what you're going to do to make sure that they are being held accountable. Making sure that your admin is keeping their staff accountable.
Excellent, we have accountability. Okay. So, thank you very much. Now, does this group here have any questions for this group about the five that they put on the board? Okay, feel good about those?
Yep.
So, thank you very much. Boy, that was one of the best I've ever had.
You don't have to do that.
They're going to be much better. Yeah, so they, they have accountability, they like to have a description of what you meant by accountability, or however you say that.
Or we want to add to your description.
We have everything underlined.
I would say ours is the staff evaluations, whatever we follow up on.
Yeah, we're with that.
That's not perfect.
So would that be the same?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so if you have accountability, basically, wouldn't she is going to come up with her chain of command and what she expects out of each individual?
Facility maintenance, because we have a bunch of facilities.
What?
Facility maintenance, we have a lot of these.
Facility maintenance.
To take care of.
And, um, technology, staying up with the times. And then you already had that stuff on.
Okay. So does this group have any questions about the items they've just put up? If you notice, I've given each of you three dots. So what I would like you to do is put your three dots on the goals or objectives that you believe is most important. Carrie, I'll use you as an example. Put your dots that are most important to you, not what you think's most important to the board, okay? So the six of you can come up here, put your dots either on or near, and we'll see what kind of a distribution we get on the direction you want Mrs. Nicholson to go.
Most important or being top of those?
So we said most important.
They're all the same, they're just dots.
Shannon, I gave you, every one of yours is red, so I'll know which one.
Yeah, he gets all pink ones.
Boy, you're getting off the board, they're really-
I know, they're from Stan.
He getting feisty now, I'll say that's a little odd.
Yes, it is very young.
You got to pick our three.
A French fry?
We're about ten minutes away.
I know you're getting antsy with Bonnie.
All right, looks like we have a tie with three, which is fine. So Mrs. Nicholson, pay attention here. We have six dots on budget. We have five dots on establishing-
Trust.
Trust. And six dots on administering, keeping admin and staff accountable. Now, I'll send all this information with the distribution of dots. So in my perception of this drill is that you probably have three things they'd really like you to concentrate on this, which sounds like things that you already have in your mind. That's great, all right. So the last real quick drill, three and three again. Within your group, I'd like you to come up with five expectations that you have of your superintendent. Now, how are those different than goals? Expectations are things that you wish her to demonstrate through the whole 10 years she's the superintendent here. And I'll, I'll give you some that are common, that doesn't mean you have to do it, but it might be a better descriptor of what I'm trying to explain. We want our superintendent to be visible within our community. So visible. We want our superintendent being effective communicator. So if each group can come up with five, you don't have to put them on sticky notes, just all this recorder, once you have, so come up with five expectations. And Mrs. Nicholson, you're going to work on a couple of expectations that you would like to present to the board in a little bit. So right now, we'll get to that a little bit.
Be transparent, transparency or communication.
So, Mrs. Nicholson, we're going to report, but I want to make sure that you understand what they mean. So if you have any questions about these at the conclusion of this, I want you to ask so that you'll know. Because these are the expectations they have of you. So the FAR group, would you please give me one of your expectations?
Community involvement.
Okay.
Oh, number one.
Okay, closest group, give me one, please.
Professionalism.
Professionalism, all right?
Communication.
Next.
Transparency, be transparent.
Next. Budget.
Staying within the budget.
Staying within the budget.
Financial stability.
And you had financial stability?
We did, same, yeah. Be trustworthy.
Okay.
Don't give them one.
And did you have any left?
Yeah.
A new, fresh perspective, okay? And did this close-
Be approachable.
Be approachable. And FAR group, any left?
Last one, ice cream cup and gold cookies.
Hey, the president brings cookies every day, so we'd like to have a light cream.
Okay, so you want some, how did I write that? Ice cream? Did you guys have another one?
Well, no, we didn't.
Okay, all right, very good. So, Mrs. Nicholson, probably it's a lot easier to understand because we didn't write that last one up there. But do you have any, do you need any further explanation of what they mean by any of these terms? Okay? Now, I said that teachers and principals, the state mandates a certain criteria. They do not mandate any criteria for a superintendent evaluation, which that may or may not be news to you. Whatever the board says is an evaluation, is an evaluation. No matter what you use, we think it very important that you at least review these items with her on a regular basis. Because she wants to know, do you feel like I'm being transparent? Am I being visible? Am I fitting your definition of whatever these are? I'm going to put these in a format that when I sent to you, so you can either use it as her evaluation the first year or the first time if you want. Or at least you include it in some part in her evaluation. All right? So, Mrs. Nicholson, now remember, this is hard because you're now asking your board, what expectations do you have of the board?
An expectation would be to have confidentiality.
Okay.
Supportive working relationships with their superintendent. Maintain high expectations, student achievement. Oh.
Hold up a little bit. Short hair. She's excited. Okay, here's what I got. Confid- Confidentiality, maintain high expectations.
Supportive working relationship. And I want us to be competitive, our students to be competitive in-
In whatever you're doing.
Your career, right, your job, whatever they're asked, they're aspiring to be. But I want it to be competitive.
Okay. So, board, she's got confidentiality, maintain high expectations, supportive with working relationships, and she wants your students to be competitive in whatever they're doing. So board, do you have any questions of Mrs. Nicholson on those expectations?
Wow, we asked her that, but she wants a vote.
So, Mr. Fisher, I'm not asking for a vote, but does the board believe that they can live up to these? She doesn't have a choice. You guys do. So do you feel comfortable with these expectations? Okay, very good. That's what I got for you this evening, so it was a quick hour and thirty-six minutes. I will send this information to you and Bonnie, and I will have it in a format. You may or may not be aware of this, she needs my law to be evaluated twice this year by the sixtieth day of each semester, just like a new teacher. Same law goes to teachers as does the superintendent. So, sixtieth day of the semester, which is usually somewhere mid-November, and then the sixtieth day is sometime right before springish break, the end of March, somewhere in there. So if you think about doing the eval at the October board meeting or the November board meeting, you might be, you're, you have talked about it enough, so you need to think about it in advance. Any questions for Gary? Guys, it's been really fun working with you, just because we're done with the formal part of the search, doesn't mean I'm done, so if you have any questions, feel free to call. I'm here as a resource for you folks, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. All the way. Six-year-old. Can we do about ten minutes, anyone want to start again?